Good evening, everybody. Happy New Year and welcome to the Monday, January 7th, meeting of the Tuckahoe Village Board of Trustees. Will everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I consider it a holy and righteous state. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jerry. Will the village clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Giordano.
President.
Trustee Luise.
President.
Trustee Andino.
President.
Trustee Lang.
President.
Mayor Eklund.
I am very happy to be here tonight. I have two reappointments to make tonight. The first is reappointing Adolfo Ruetta to the Assessment Review Board for a new five-year term to September 30, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Want to thank you, Adolfo, for staying on that board.
Trustee Giordano.
Favor.
Trustee Luise.
Favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And the second reappointment is reappointing Kathy Galucci as chairwoman to the Assessment Review Board for a one-year period to September 30, 2019. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And also, thank you to Kathy, and now they can have their meeting in February.
Trustee Giordano.
Favor.
Trustee Luise.
Favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. We have a presentation tonight. We're going to hear from the village's auditor, Jeff Storch, who's going to present our financial statement for the fiscal year ending 2018. So Jeff, I'm going to ask if you'd come on up to the mic and tell us how we're doing.
Thank you, Mayor.
As Ed Koch used to say.
Members of the Board of Trustees, my name is Jeff Shaver. I'm an audit partner with PKF O'Connor-Davies. I'm here to present the audit results for the year ended May 31, 2018. I've prepared a brief PowerPoint that everyone should have in front of them. Most of the information in there is taken directly from the audit. And of course, I'll be available to answer any questions on the actual statements themselves. Just in the way of an agenda, I'll go through some required communications related to the audit, and then I'll jump right into the general fund, talk about the major revenues and expenditures, talk about the fund balance. And then after the general fund, I'll give you a summary of the village's long-term liabilities. In the way of required communications, page three of the handout, management's responsibilities are selecting and implementing appropriate accounting policies, fairly presenting the financial statements in accordance with U.S. GAAP, establishing and maintaining effective internal control over financial reporting, compliance with laws and regulations, and providing all financial records to the auditors. Page four, we as auditors are essentially responsible to express an opinion on the financial statements. I'm happy to say the financial statements, we issued an unmodified opinion. It's also referred to as a clean opinion, and that's the most favorable opinion an auditor can give a set of financial statements. So that's first and foremost. We perform tests of the village's compliance with provisions of laws and contracts, communicate in writing any deficiencies in internal controls, advise on the appropriateness of accounting policies, communicate any fraud or illegal acts that were noted during the audit. I'm happy to say we noted no fraud or illegal acts during the audit. We encountered no significant difficulties in the conduct of the audit, report on any uncorrected or corrected misstatements. Uncorrected misstatements are audit entries or adjustments that we thought should be made to the financial statements that were not made. So there were none of those such uncorrected misstatements. In fact, there were no corrected misstatements either, so meaning the figures that were given to us as auditors remained, and we made no substantive changes to those numbers, which speaks to the condition of the books and records of the village, which is very good. And we're independent with respect to the village. On page five, I'll jump into the general fund. This is a schedule of revenues expenditures compared to budget. This is a four-column presentation. This is general fund only. First column is the original budget as adopted. Final budget encompasses all transfers and amendments during the year. Third column is actual revenues and expenses. And the fourth column is the variance between the final budget and the actual revenues and expenses. Revenues in the original adopted budget were anticipated to be $12,418,000. That number was revised slightly up to $12,625,000. Actual revenues for the year, $12,868,000. That's a positive budgetary variance of $242,000. Expenditures were initially budgeted at $11,715,000, revised upwards to $11,905,000. Actual expenditures, $11,896,000. That's a positive budgetary variance of just under $9,000. Other financing sources and uses, in the case of the village of Tuckahoe, are essentially transfers to other funds, which is your capital fund and your library. The revenues less the expenditures and other financing sources and uses brings you to net change in fund balance, or net income for the year, which was $273,000. So you added that number, $273,000, to your fund balance. You started the year with fund balance of $1,841,000. You end the year with $2,114,000 in general fund fund balance.
And that's a healthy fund balance for a village?
That is, I have some numbers towards the end of the slides, but it is a healthy number. I'll have some metrics there to show you.
Okay.
One other thing I want to point out on this slide, you didn't utilize any fund balance when you adopted your budget. So you anticipated collecting $12,418,000, and you anticipated spending all that money. You didn't use any of that fund balance to lower the tax rate, which means you're not relying on that one-shot revenue of fund balance to balance the budget, which is an excellent thing to say, and it allows you to not be concerned about that as you move forward with your budgets. On the next slides, I'll just go into a little bit more detail on the revenues and expenditures. Page six is the major revenues only. I've accounted for approximately 95% of all the general fund revenues on this sheet, so it's not everything, but the major categories are all here. The largest revenue item is the property taxes, budgeted at $7.874 million. Actual collections were $7.7744,000. That's a variance of $130,000. Keep in mind, when you pay out tax surcharge claims that relate to that current year, they get recorded against that revenue. So the $130,000 variance is tax surcharge repayments that went out relating to the 17, 18 year. Non-property tax distribution from the county is the sales tax distribution. The budget was $959,000. $1,023,000 was collected, so that was a positive variance of $64,000. Licenses and permits, a little farther down the page, the budget initially was $527,000. It was revised upwards to $734,000. Actual collections were $772,000. That's a $38,000 positive variance. And the difference between the original budget and the final budget, as police detail assignments were happening throughout the year, the budget was increased to reflect that. So you anticipated the additional revenue reimbursements, and you'll also see it on the expenditure side in the Police Department, additional appropriations. Fines and forfeited bail, actual collections were $547,000, or $7,500 greater than the budget. The mortgage tax was budgeted at $115,000. Actual collections were $132,000. And the final number, refund of prior year expenditures, which was unbudgeted because it's generally unanticipated, actual collections were $170,000. There were some collections from police details related to previous years that get recorded in that category. You can see, I mentioned on the previous page, it was about $240,000 of revenue surplus. I've accounted for $202,000 on this page, so the bulk of your revenue items, your revenue surpluses are accounted for right here. Moving down to page seven, this is a similar presentation for the major expenditures in the general fund. I've accounted for about 90% of the expenditures. The first line is general government support, so there are multiple departments within that code. The original budget was $1,722,000. Final budget was $1,601,000. Actual expenditures were $1.6 million. And you see the variance with the budget was a small amount, $351,000. I will note that, you'll notice in the variance with the final budget column, the numbers are quite small. The village tends to manage its budget quite tightly, so...
I see $10, $5, $4.
Yeah, you see some $1s.
You probably don't see that in too many other municipalities.
It comes very close.
Yeah.
And so you manage your expenditures tightly, and you allow the surplus to come in on the revenue side. That's why the $240,000 surplus on the revenue side, whereas the expenditure side of the budget typically has been managed very tightly and controlled, if you will. Some other large categories, the Police Department is initially budgeted at $3.2 million. It was increased, as I had mentioned, related to the police details. The final budget was $3,498,000. Actual expenditures were $3,498,000. Street maintenance is $1,233 initially budgeted, $1,321 as revised, and the actual expenditures were also $1,321. Refuge and garbage, $602,000 expenditures. State retirement, that's the retirement for the police, and in addition to the regular non-police employees, the expenditures were $1,034,000. Social Security contributions, or FICA contributions, were $404,000. Hospital medical and dental insurance, initially budgeted at $1,714,000. Actual expenditures, $1,629,000. I'll highlight the increase year over year. In 2017, the expenditures were just under $1.5 million. There were some significant premium increases that are getting passed along to municipalities that it's just a large increase, just something to be aware of. And debt service, initially budgeted $655,000, and you spend generally what you budgeted in that category, so no surplus there. So here, I've accounted for about 90% of all the expenditure categories in the budget. What it all comes down to is the next slide, page eight. This is the general fund fund balance. This is a five-year presentation, it's a little bit more than what's in the financial statements, but it gives you a flavor for where the fund balance has gone over the past five years. The total fund balance at the end of 2018 in the first column, $2,114,000. You're required to segregate your funds into different categories. In the case of the village, almost all of your fund balance is what we call unassigned, which is free and clear. It's not restricted in any way. It's available to be used at the discretion of the board. So it's not encumbered for future purchases, and it's not legally restricted in any way. So it's important to note that almost all of your fund balance, $2,108,000 of it is unassigned. So you could use that figure to balance future budgets, if you so desired. As a percentage of the next year's budget, or in this case, the 18, 19 budget, the number stands at 16.6%, which is a healthy number. And you can see the trend here, it has been going in a positive direction. 14.5% the previous year, 11% in '16, 4.6%, and it was a small deficit in 2014.
Right. And that's, just so people at home understand, fund balance, we always like to say is sort of your savings account. You know, that's your savings account that you would draw from if you needed to, but as you've shown here, we've made a very strong effort to make sure that we don't use our savings account, but we build our savings account. And that was our goal, and I see, I'm very happy that we were able to do that. I don't think the village, I know the village has never had over $2 million in fund balance. I don't believe we've ever had that. That's a huge amount of money. But it's 16.5%. I know we've had these conversations before, you know, should you keep 5%? Should you keep, you know, 16.5%? The auditors would love us to keep as much as possible, because it's financial strength for the village. Would you say there's a certain limit you really shouldn't go over?
From an auditor's point of view, I wouldn't say there's a limit.
Okay.
But I would say common benchmarks, the state looks at 10% as a point where you're in the healthy range.
Okay.
So 10% might be a minimum. You wouldn't want to go below.
Okay.
Anywhere between 10 and 20% is just typically, without any other details, is typically a healthy fund balance.
That's good, so we're there. We're right there.
So you're right in there. Some municipalities may wish to keep more. That's a policy.
Right.
It's a policy decision.
Good.
But as it stands right now, the 16.6% I would say is a healthy number.
That's great.
And you haven't been relying on fund balance to balance your budget?
Right. And so that's the second time you said that, so I wanted to clarify that also. When we're preparing our budget, and we look at all the expenses, and some expenses are guesstimates, we're guesstimating that our insurance premium is going to be this amount more than last year. We're guesstimating that our energy costs are going to be this amount versus last year. So there's a degree of educated guessing when you're preparing your budget. And when you take all that data and you plug it into your spreadsheet, and you look at what your revenues are, you know what your revenues are pretty well fixed. If you keep, if you know what your tax levy is, so you know what your parking, other revenue items, which are parking revenue items, some building department fees. So when you have all that, and you've had, let's say, maybe a 10% increase in your liability and workers' comp insurance, or more than that workers' comp, and if your pension fund increases 10 or 12%, that right away sets the scale, sometimes so out of balance. And it's very tempting for boards to say, "Well, look, we're sitting on $2 million in cash. Let's take $400,000 out of our fund balance and apply it to this, so we don't have to go ahead and raise taxes at all. Let's keep taxes at zero." But what you do, that's the slippery slope that obviously we were at back at a certain point in time. So we've avoided that slippery slope, and I'm really glad that we did. So the goal here is to not take your fund balance cash and use it to balance your budget. Do as best a job as you can. There are some instances, sometimes when maybe you're forced to, you have to, especially if you're going to stay under the 2% tax gap. But you know, that's why we have great department heads who try to do more with less, so we can not erode that savings account. Did I get it right?
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
Said it well.
Thank you.
Are there any questions on the general fund? The next slide is really a little bit of a gear shift, where it talks about some long-term liabilities.
Sure.
This is a snapshot of, as of the beginning of the year, and changes, bringing you to the end of the year, of operating and capital long-term liabilities of the village. At the beginning of the year, long-term liabilities were $17,689,000. At the end of the year, they were down slightly to $16,952,000. Of that number, 5.5 million is bonds. So you'll be paying that down over the next 10, 20 years. In the next budget cycle, you're scheduled to pay down 502,000. And I know you recently issued a new bond. That will come on to the, that's not reflected in the schedule, that would increase that amount.
Do you also provide an opinion on whether or not you think our debt service is too high or too low versus what our...
You know, the benchmarks are less talked about with debt service.
Okay.
I hear people talk about 5% of your budget.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you wouldn't want to go above 10% of your budget at a certain point. If you're higher than 10% of your budget, you may be spending too high of a percentage on debt service.
Paying that debt service every year, right.
Of course, it matters, the status of your infrastructure, if you have needs coming up, or you don't, so that's a factor as well. I think at about $650,000, your budget's around, you know, you're about 5%.
Right.
So it doesn't strike me as being overly high, or you know, it's right where it should be. It's not certainly not.
Okay, good. That's what we felt, too, yeah.
So that's what's outstanding as of May 31, 2018, 5.5 million.
Okay.
Keeping in mind, you did issue, I believe it was 1.4 million, subsequent to this. Compensated absences stands at $594,000. That's the value of accrued sick and vacation time of your employees. That'll be paid out in the future as they retire. Net pension liability is $1,146,000. That number is given to you by New York State, the pension system. So the New York State pension system for police and fire and regular employees has a statewide net pension obligation, or unfunded pension obligation of, say, some billion dollars, let's say. A small portion of that relates to the village of Tuckahoe. This is your proportion of that liability. Because the state's plan is fairly well-funded, it's about 90%, so this number isn't that large. If you look at it, some other state pension plans are much more poorly funded, and you'd see much higher numbers in this regard.
So New York State is much better than New Jersey, I hear.
Say, New Jersey would be one to compare to.
Yeah.
New York stands at about 90% funded. New Jersey, I think it's in the 20s.
Yeah.
Or 30s. So you know, New York appears to be doing a better job at funding its pensions. So realize the contribution rates are somewhat high, but you are paying the bills as they come down.
Right, right.
And any shortfall would have to be made up in rates in the future. You wouldn't pay this liability down directly, it will get adjusted in future rates.
In your premiums, yeah, future. Yeah, I guess I'll call it a premium, for lack of a better word.
The contribution rates as established by New York State.
Right. Good.
Finally, other post-employment benefit obligations payable. That's amounts to be paid in the future for village retirees, for health insurance specifically. I'll point out that there's a new accounting standard that's going to apply to the village next year for the May of 19 article.
That's to all villages, right?
All villages.
All villages in the state.
All municipalities.
Right.
It just so happens the school districts already got hit with it for the June 18 numbers, just because of the way the fiscal year ends fall. So we've seen the change in this accounting for, say, Tuckahoe schools, has already gone through it for June of 18. Just because you're in May, you get another year. When we look at this number again next year, it's going to be higher than 9.7. So this, what the previous accounting would allow for was a calculation of the total liability outstanding for all currently earned and current retirees, that cost to be amortized over 30 years. So it would allow you to recognize the cost for the current year, and the previous years would be amortized over 30 years. So the liability would slowly grow. At May 31, 2018, we're at 9.7 million. The total number, as determined by your actuaries, was 24 million. So that's the number, that's the value of all the health insurance in the future as of now, or the date it was determined. That's going to have to be accounted for in your long-term liabilities 100% next year.
And that held true. Do you know what it went, in the school district? Do you know what the number change was?
I don't know off the top of my head, but they're...
It was probably a huge, I was going to say huge.
So the way I've been looking at it, and it's kind of been holding true, your 9.7 million is going to go up to at least 24 million, which is the way the actuaries had determined that entire number last year. Because of actuarial assumption changes, a more stringent discount rate being the biggest factor, and some other, they're forced into certain actuarial cost methods and things like that, the number is tending to grow, so that 24 million could go to 26, 27, 28 million. That's kind of the, don't hold me to that, I'm just, you know, giving you an idea, flavor of what's happening to the schools. The 9.7 million liability next year, you know, is going to be at least a 24 million, you know, could be up to 30 million. This is also numbers that are going to impact the future. They don't directly impact your general fund budget. Your general fund budget is pay-as-you-go. So you budget for the cash payments you're going to make during the fiscal year. So this is a liability that relates to cash payments past that date.
Right.
So just keep that in mind, that it doesn't have a direct effect on your budget, just in terms of the way you, you know, the current cash payments.
And this change was mandated by the state, if I remember right?
This is a governmental accounting standards board, which is technically not the state, it's an accounting standard setter, similar to FASB would be for, you know, commercial enterprises and not-for-profit enterprises. In government, you follow GASB, so they're the ones setting the accounting rules. And the state kind of says, "Oh, follow GAB." So they're kind of, they kind of piggyback on what the GASB tells you to do. So you can blame the GASB if you want.
All right, okay. Well, yeah. At least, thank goodness, it's not due and payable in 30 days.
It's not due and payable.
More like 30 years.
And that's all I had prepared.
No, that's perfect. It's very thorough, thank you. I know we had the interview, which we did the exit interview, and that went well. Any of the board members have any questions? Thank you so much for coming tonight, appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. You know, as we've now heard, our finances are in fantastic shape, but you know, that doesn't happen by accident, so I really want to thank Jim LaPurse. He's an individual who's been working for the village for a couple of years now. He's a retired individual from the city of Yonkers. And between Jim LaPurse and Ryan Ruetta, of course, under the steady hand of David Burke, what a change, unbelievable. So you know, this document here tells the story, so thank you all, you know. Can't say thanks enough. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. All right, that's going to bring us to public hearings, and we have a public hearing tonight. It's the public hearing to consider the adoption of the Marbledale Road Design Guidelines as an amendment to the village comprehensive plan. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Trustee Giordano.
Favor.
Trustee Luise.
Favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. All right, so the public hearing is now open, and I'm going to actually ask Noah Levine. He's from the village's planning firm, BFJ Planning, to give us a summary on these guidelines that we're talking about here. We've been talking about them for a couple of months now.
Great, thank you, Mayor. My name is Noah Levine. I work for BFJ Planning. We were hired by the village to develop design guidelines for the Marbledale Road corridor. We met with the mayor administrator Burke and some other involved stakeholders, I think in the summer sometime, to talk about how we could improve the corridor, one that was historically industrial and such an important part of Tuckahoe's past, but you know, wasn't exactly where the village, it wasn't connected to the rest of the village, and the development guidelines weren't in line with the way that the village saw that the corridor should be redeveloped. And so we were hired to develop guidelines. I have in front of me the document, which I believe was provided to the trustees, is that correct?
Yep.
And I'm also under the understanding that you were provided it in November, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
So I think today, I'll just give a brief overview of what we did, and I'll talk about, the planning board did provide some recommendations and what changes were made, what subsequent changes were made, and then I'll be available to take any questions. But the overall goals of the design guidelines were to enhance the streetscape and the built environment by establishing an overall design vocabulary, also to provide design recommendations for use by the planning board when considering new projects, and then to enhance overall, enhance the corridor as a business corridor for the village and attract new economic opportunities. And lastly, to create a more attractive pedestrian environment between Main Street and Fisher Avenue. And it's important to note that there are recommendations in the design guidelines that are for developers, and there are also recommendations for the village to consider for future improvements along the corridor, you know, should the village see fit. And there are also recommendations for zoning changes that would be in line with the recommendations in this report. um, in this report, um, to promote development that, um, is a little bit more harmonious with the goals that I just mentioned. Um, it's, it's also important to mention that the design guidelines are not necessarily, um, strict construction. It's not a strict document for, um, for, uh, new developments, they don't have to adhere to every single guideline. It's, it's merely, um, a, a document that the planning board should review, uh, when determining if, um, you know, when reviewing new applications, if, uh, if a development show, they can show some flexibility, if they're able to, um, show that they are within the intent, but have, if they come up with another creative solution, um, I think the planning board is within their, uh, rights to, uh, to approve such a, uh, uh, such a propos, such a proposal. It's really meant to serve as a guiding document on what a desirable development along the corridor should be. Um, but the document has, um, um, in the outline, um, the design guidelines for new development, we provide recommendations for sidewalks. And those recommendations, uh, uh, are, uh, in summary, kind of to, um, replicate what was done in front of, uh, Main Street Park, where you have a five-foot sidewalk and, you know, a one or two-foot buffer. Um, we recommend that there be fifteen feet, um, between the right-of-way, the curb and the building front, so that allows for about seven feet, uh, for the sidewalk and about eight feet for landscaping and other, um, amenities, uh, in front of the building. And that should give the, the corridor a little bit more of a, a green feel and feel a little bit more open. Um, we've provided recommendations for street trees and landscaping, uh, and specifically which species, um, would be more appropriate for the corridor, which are more, um, conducive to, you know, being under, you know, near, um, other, uh, infrastructure and, uh, native species and, and such. Um, we've looked at, uh, vehicular circulation and on-street parking and off-street parking, um, other streetscape amenities, bicycle parking and other environmental standards. Uh, as I mentioned before, we also have zoning recommendations, which are provided in the back in the appendix. Um, and then we have other recommendations for the village to consider, uh, such as place-making opportunities. We have a, a diagram of, of an idea for, um, a kind of a mini parklet at the intersection of Jackson Avenue and Marbledale Road and ways to improve the gateways from both sides to make it feel more like a place. Um, we've also talked about signage improvements and ways to brand the corridor, so, so kind of non, um, things that might not require a huge amount of capital, uh, investment, but might do a lot to uh, raise the awareness of the Marbledale Corridor, not just for Toccoho residents, but, but, but people, um, elsewhere. Um, it was the overall intention to kind of look for, uh, low-hanging fruit opportunities to minimize, uh, the investment that the, the village would need to, to make in the corridor. Um, and so we were mindful of that, and so the, the recommendations that we provided in our documents are, are things, other than the, the design guidelines, are things that the village could consider, um, but aren't requirements. Uh, but they're, they are good ideas. And what the design guidelines do is they, they give the village a little bit more leverage, um, when applying for grants. Uh, and also, uh, it's something that you can point to when you're looking for private funding or potentially, if you do have some money, ways that you can invest smartly. So that's the overall intent of the d- design guidelines. Um, I think I was gonna move in to talk about the planning board changes, is that? Um, do you have any comments, Gary or David, before we move forward?
That's perfect.
Um, so we did, uh, receive some recommendations from the planning board. And, uh, we looked at them closely and, uh, almost all of the recommendations, um, seemed very reasonable and easy to make. Uh, there were some recommendations that I just wanted to, um, bring to your attention that we weren't able to, or we, we just wanted to discuss and, and didn't necessarily, uh, make those changes right away. Um, one change that was discussed was, um, utilities. Uh, the first one, that, there was a change requested that, um, all developers, um, bury utility lines. Um, and we just wanted to make clear that in our report, uh, we recommend, or, or say strongly that developers should bury the lines from their buildings up until the right-of-way, until the, the pole. Um, and that is, you know, a fairly straightforward thing for a developer to do. Um, however, burying the lines along the right-of-way, um, is a very difficult thing to do piecemeal. Um, as I'm sure, um, you know, you know, um, after doing the Main Street, um, burial, it's really something that needs to be done corridor-wide. ConEd doesn't do kind of a piecemeal approach to burying of the utility lines. So, uh, we feel, you know, it's, it's our, um, feeling as, as planners that, you know, it might be, the approach might be to, um, you know, for the village to take leadership in this role or think about it at a later opportunity, or maybe, you know, if you do, if you are able to apply for grants or work with ConEd, but it might be a difficult undertaking for an individual developer to do, um, for the whole corridor, or even for their property.
And just to kind of dovetail on that, when we did Crestwood, um, we did it for that entire stretch from Lincoln to Fisher and it was over a million dollars.
Right.
Um, when they did the burying of the lines in front of Quarry Place up here, um, they, they actually jumped the line. And that was a requirement of the fire department because the ladder truck needed to be able to, uh, run that truck right inside and have access to it. So that condition would still apply. So if a developer, let's say, was, um, gonna buy a building on Marbledale Road and knock it down and put a new building up and keep it within, uh, right up to that fifteen-foot suggestion that's here, it could very well be that the, uh, East Chester Fire District says, well, hold on now. You need to take that line out from in front of that nice building that you're proposing because when we have to fight a fire, we have to run our ladder truck up against there. We cannot have that line in the way. So that would really be his, or that developer's issue at that time.
Right, that would be, right, exactly, that would be a, a, a different case.
Right.
Certain.
Okay.
Um, so that was our interpretation of that, and so we, we tried to clarify the language, but, um, you know, it's our understanding that the developer would be responsible for burying the line from the building to the right-of-way, but, uh, that they wouldn't necessarily be, uh, responsible for anything in the right-of-way. So there's that. The next one was, uh, uh, just a clear definition to determine the height of the building. Uh, they wanted that to be, uh, of the purview of the planning board and, and I think we just wanted to, um, just to clarify that, um, it's the, the building inspector is, is the, has the authority on, on building height. So we weren't, we real, didn't want to make that change in the document, just knowing that that is really, um, in the building inspector's purview. Um, there was a comment about the seventy percent lot coverage should be reduced to sixty percent. Um, that we actually did do, we, we did find, we just did a survey of all the lots and sixty percent seemed to be, um, reasonable, um, for, for what is there now. So, so we did make that change. Uh, there was a, there was a request that we change the lot, the, the required landscape area from fifteen percent to twenty percent. Uh, and we felt that with the fifteen percent, uh, fifteen-foot setback, rather, and the side yards and the rear yard, et cetera, and all the landscaping requirements that are inherent, um, that should be sufficient to cover, to, um, provide adequate landscaping to make the corridor feel more green. Um, we feel that twenty percent might make it a little bit more difficult to make a, a development, um, economically feasible, um, especially with the parking requirements and such. Um, fifteen percent is consistent with other industrial areas. Uh, also, it's worth noting that a lot of the, the properties that are there now probably are non-conforming with regard to landscaping. I'm sure that there, you know, most of the properties are almost all covered with, with asphalt, so, um, so fifteen percent would be a dramatic improvement, I, in my opinion. Um, and I think that covers most of the big changes. Um, there was one clerical change, uh, which, um, which we noticed. Uh, actually, Bill, uh, Williams pointed this out, that in the, um, schedule of area and bulk requirements, um, there's, what we think was just a typo. Um, the minimum, uh, lot width, um, right now is at five hundred feet. Um, it's, it's likely supposed to be fifty feet, um, it's probably more of an administrative change. Um, but we should, uh, change that so that someone doesn't have to, uh, get a zoning variance for that.
For, for half of their whole street.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, Bill picked up on that, huh? Good to Bill, good for Bill.
So otherwise, I, I think that covers, um, the changes, um, I'm, I'm happy to take questions.
One of the things that, uh, we spoke about in our work session, and Gary can chime in on this too, was about the height, the building height. Um, a- as you said, it really should be, um, an interpretation by the building inspector. And I think, Gary, when, uh, you talked to Bill, he said it really should come from the state. The state has a, uh, a, a definition on this. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Um, I think where we stand now, and I was talking to Mr. Levine before, is our code doesn't define how to measure height. So it's the building department's interpretation of how high a building is. And Bill has a, a formula, and he's consistent with that formula. The, the important thing was being consistent.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but Mr. Williams said in, in the state code, there is a definition of how to measure height, which he thinks we could possibly implement, I talked to Mr. Levine about that. And we're gonna look into that, uh, speak to Mr. Williams. Um, so it kind of takes out the, I guess, subjectiveness of how high a building is, which really.
And I guess if, if this were the plot of land and it's on an angle this way and it's on an angle that way, um, i- if, if I remember right, the state interprets you take these elevation points and you divide them by four and that's where you start. Something along those lines.
That's what Mr. Williams explained to me.
Okay, all right. As opposed to, Bill has been consistent, and I think Bill, I can remember on the Crestwood project, he would look at it like on Lincoln Avenue, okay, um, let's, let's take where we're at here, let's take where we're at here on the top of the property and divide it in half, and that's gonna be where the benchmark is.
I think he looks at the frontage, where the front of the building is, takes the average from the front.
Right, exactly, okay. So, um, so, but here again, that would be an issue, that would be a change to our zoning.
That's correct.
Right, so, um, and, so these are recommendations that, uh, we have. But, um, clearly what'll have to happen moving forward is, well, certainly to make the typo change. So there's gonna have to be a change in our, uh, to our zoning.
Right, yeah, the next step would be to adopt the, the guidelines, which we're here for.
Yep.
And then if the village chooses to, um, adopt the recommended, uh, the recommended, uh, zoning changes, then that would be the next step.
Okay. Well, we're, um, it, it's a public hearing, so it's open, thank you. And, uh, what we're gonna do is we're gonna actually keep this open for another month because we want the public to have an opportunity, anybody who's watching this at home, they might wanna write in a suggestion or they may wanna come to the meeting next month, at which point we will close it. So since it is a, uh, public hearing, I'm gonna ask, is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this? Yes, ma'am?
Hi. Uh, Sarah Wood, fifty Lawrence Avenue. Um, I have hopefully not totally random thoughts that I just, and I'm not exactly sure if, like, I have questions, but maybe they're just to put out there, they don't necessarily have to be answered tonight. But, um, I was, first of all, confused because it seems like the planning board hasn't met since November, but maybe the recommendations they made, or the changes that they made, have been communicated other than.
We had a, if I may, we had a special work session, uh, that was, we, we did put on the website and everything. It was, uh, I think the meeting last month was canceled, so what we did, it was we took the public meeting and made it a work session and they spent hours here, uh, going over this.
Okay. I just wasn't sure, because it seems like they, they did only met like six times last year, so I was thinking like, oh, is this a separate topic? But, um, so that was one thing, so great, they met, they read it, perfect. And then another question I had was if part of the survey, or maybe the next, a neck, one of the next steps could be like, what kind of businesses do we even want to attract? And how, how do we, like, what kind of survey could be done to figure out what people feel like they need? Or what would be, like, okay, so now we have, in theory, a hotel, we have a gas station, we have Westies. Like, what else do we want or need? And how much leeway is there for businesses that are there now, um, that maybe would fall under like a less desirable category? Like, what, what do you do about, like, Harpo's Auto Repair? Which, he's my mechanic, I don't know. You know, how do you sort of strategize about, like, what you think would be good and useful and people need? How do you attract those businesses and then maybe dissuade other types of businesses that you don't maybe think fit, fit in with, like, the plant, the overall plan? Um, so that was the question about, like, what are, what are next steps? Like, how do you go about figuring out? And do you sort of recruit businesses, or do you just see who's interested?
Well, there is a couple of ways to do that, actually. You could, um, hire a firm who actually comes in and they do a full analysis of your court, of your entire municipality. And, um, they will go ahead and give you a recommendation. Of course, there's no binding because the village doesn't own any of the property, but it's a, uh, sort of a, a wishlist of what would work really great on that road. And we're talking about Marbledale Road. So you can actually hire the services of firms to do that. Um, what the village board could do is we could actually put together a committee who could volunteer and do that. Uh, sometimes that takes a long time, but we have a lot of talent in our community. So, you know, you might take from, or you might, uh, appoint to that committee, you know, people from different industries. You've got some real estate people, you have some people who are currently down on that road, some industrial people, uh, some retail people, some, uh, service people. So, um, you know, that's, that's another way. There really, there's two ways that I see it, there could be others, but that's kind of the way I see it.
Um, and then that kind of leads me to my next question. So I think I read in the report that there are only two lots that the village owns, the DPW and then.
And the park.
And the park.
Right.
But what it, like, could the village acquire, like, if there are vacant lots or buildings, like vacant vacancies, could the village acquire or endeavor to inquire more property? Like, would that be something that would be.
Yeah, well, if, if it became available and, and, uh, we wanted to, like, you know, it's unfortunately, we're at the peak of the market. I, I always remember years ago, it was, uh, long before I was on the board, that their, uh, gas stations down there in Crestwood, that they were available to, the, they were available for sale for like six hundred thousand dollars. And the board at that time, probably the same way we are, is like, hey, we don't have money, you know, and our constituents don't want us to borrow more money. So, you know, we're just getting by with, you know, making you put money in your parking meter and giving you a property tax bill. So, um, you know, there's a, you know, a mindset of, do you go ahead and acquire property for, um, what use? And the, you know, there are rules as to what the village can do in terms of generating income. We can't buy property and say, well, let's now put a restaurant on there and we're gonna go ahead and make all this money because we're in the restaurant business. We're not allowed to do that.
Yeah.
Um, but we could certainly buy a piece of land if we really felt we wanted to build another DPW building or a, uh, senior center or, you know, something, yeah.
Green space.
Exactly, or just create a park, create another park, absolutely.
Cause I wondered, like, one thing that I thought either I missed it or it's not in there, um, it would be nice to see on that, on that lit, the kind of aerial view of the, of the portion that we're discussing, like, which, um, plots of land or buildings are vacant? To kind of see the adjacencies of, like, like you have a business and then you have vacancy, 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 empty lot, lot full of cars, and then hotel, you know what I mean? Like, just to sort of get, like, an overall picture of, like, if you start up at, like, the south end, is it kind of more plausible to start at that end and kind of work your way up? Or, or how, um, just like how those vacant lots and buildings are dispersed within what exists already? And like their adjacency to the hotel, I think is important. Like, for the hotel to succeed, I think it can't look like it's in the middle of, like, an industrial site. It needs to kind of look like it's trying to be something else.
I think I, I, you know, I'll speak for myself, I always felt that once the hotel, uh, was built, that probably that's gonna spur such an increase in value of other properties that it might take some of those property owners and finally put them at a tipping point where they're like, you know what? I'm, I'm done manufacturing whatever I'm manufacturing, I'm gonna go ahead and sell this. So now there's a new person who comes in here and says, wonderful, I've been waiting for that. I'm gonna go ahead and buy that property because I'm gonna, uh, develop it for a business that would thrive being next door to a hotel. And I really think that that's, um, most likely what you're gonna see. You have to have an anchor and, and clearly the hotel is large enough where that's gonna be the anchor for Marbledale Road. And that's gonna change, I think, the, you know, uh, what you see on Marbledale Road. And, you know, it might take ten or fifteen years, but it's what happened on Main Street here, it's why Main Street is so beautiful.
Um, along, along those lines, I was thinking, I, I, on like page twenty-seven, the idea for the little, I forget what it's called, like, a green knob, or like a little.
The Jackson Avenue?
Yeah, the Jackson Avenue Marbledale Road, uh, where the railroad tracks are invisible. It seems like such a great opportunity for, like, Toccoho's Historical Society and Beautification and a green space and it's close to the hotel. And it looks terrible right now, so it seems like, uh, like an opportunity to converge, like, all those different, um, efforts. I know that it, but it's not a property that the village owns, so.
Right, and that, I was just gonna say that I think we needed to survey that because I'm not sure. I'm not sure, we, we know we own something there, because we own the street.
Right.
We're not really sure how far into that where those, where the old rail lines are, you know, how much of that is the village?
Well, the village owns the sidewalks, right? So seven feet from the curb, I think.
That property happens to be a kind of unique space, so I think a survey would probably...
Yeah, yeah.
I just, I got really excited about that. I thought that looked like a really good idea, so. And then my other question, just generally, the sidewalks seem like they're really in disrepair along the whole way, except for maybe by the park, the Main Street Park. But it says in there that the village owns the sidewalks, but it's the responsibility of the property owner to maintain, but it doesn't seem like very many owners are doing that. Is there no real way to enforce that, or?
They have to keep their sidewalks in, in, I'll say, good order, you know, good, good repair. If not, then the village can and will go ahead and give them a notice of, or, first of all, give them a warning to go ahead and cure the defect in the sidewalk. And, so we put them on notice. So then they have to go ahead and cure that problem, they have to fix their sidewalk, in essence. Just, you know, all residents have to do that in front of their properties.
But I wonder, so I wonder if there's like a half measure between, like, redoing all the sidewalks wholesale, and just getting people to kind of bring the level up, like you were saying, people are, people are not complying to whatever the, I can't remember what you said, the percentage of landscaping that you're supposed to, like, there are all these things that seem like they're kind of already in place, that aren't really being complied with, that would make it, like aesthetically, in the short term, look better, which might help attract businesses? Like, nobody wants to be the first, the first one on the block, right, to kind of move in and buy new trees, and, like, as a new developer, probably that's not the most appealing move to make. But if it looked a little better than it does now in the interim, it might be helpful, long-term.
I think, my opinion is that developers who are going to be looking at parcels of property that may be vacant, there are a few that are empty lots, or existing buildings, that they may eyeball and say, you know what, I'm going to go ahead, and that, that building isn't a useful building for what their vision is, or what their plans are. I don't see any reason at all why a developer wouldn't, when he's in the process of redeveloping that site, why he wouldn't put in new curbing and putting beautiful sidewalks and so on. I absolutely think they would do that.
No, I think you're right about that completely, but I'm wondering, just to, to want to get in, involved in rehabbing kind of like a district, like, to bring your business in and, and invest in that way, you want to kind of see that it's on the upswing. And I think if things were a little bit better maintained, just aesthetically, it would be more attractive to, to businesses. That's just, that's just my opinion. But, maybe that's it. I guess that's it.
Okay, thank you.
I was curious, though, if anyone knows, it says the Smith, Smith Carnes site, is car storage? Whose cars are they?
That's, that's actually the property next to, you know where Westies is?
Yeah.
And then to the right of Westies? I don't think there's cars there now, but there, for many years, there was cars there. So, that's the Smith Carnes property, that's what they're talking about.
Okay, so that's just...
That's that green, probably those empty lots you were, you were thinking about.
Yeah, it's a green, it's kind of a green space already. But that's just someone's property, and they haven't...
It's, yeah, and I think that Westies is actually going to buy that property and extend their building, so, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Hi, Mike Dardano, 62 Chestnut Street, Tuckahoe. A couple of things. One is, I'm, I'm glad about the whole native plant part of the plan. It's extremely important. I know that Frank and I talked about it a little bit, and I know, I believe the village is, is doing that. The county, actually, George Latimer signed an order in September to have native plants be put in county property when they make changes. So I'm, I'm glad about that, because, although it'll be interesting to see how the plants change based on the climate, but nonetheless, it's, it's very positive. I think, I just want to get this out, because I think we might be making a mistake. You mentioned Harpo's. I just feel, I feel that there's this, still this negative thing about industrial buildings, and, and even in our society, we tend to like, oh, go to college, don't do trades. It really upsets me, and I think that I'd like, what, what I'd like to see, I like the idea, Mayor, of, of a committee, not hiring an outside company, because I think that those, those blue collar jobs are important. What Stofel does, what PTI does, what Elcan does. Now, Johnard, you all know, is leaving, they don't have the space, but industrial space is at a priority right now. So perhaps, using some of these design guidelines, someone moves in to that industrial space, but makes it look more like an industrial park, utilizing your design suggestions, so it doesn't look so, you know, twentieth, mid-twentieth century kind of thing.
I can't agree with you more, I'll tell you. You know what? Who's going to fix my car? Who's, I own a scaffolding company. Who's going to build scaffolding? Who's going to, you know, you need electrician, you need plumber, absolutely.
So that's why, in, in thinking about this, that we, the idea of incorporating some towns folks who have that expertise, I also brought it up to the chamber. The chamber likes the idea of being part of this discussion. And we come up with a group, and obviously it's private property, so we can't dictate to people, but we certainly can make suggestions, recommendations, maybe even work with the, the County, County Industrial Development Agency, with Bridget Gibbons, who lives in Bronxville. So those, I just wanted to throw that out there, and going forward, that I think that might be something that we should, should consider, and then utilizing, I, I'm all for design changes and making it look better. I don't want to just make it, like, all more boutiques and retail, we don't need that. But, I mean, I would argue, the hotel is kind of industrial, in a way. It kind of looks like, you know, it's sort of got that look, it's not really ritzy, it wasn't supposed to be, it would look out of context if it, if it was. So just wanted to...
Very true. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak on this?
Noah Caliano, Westview Avenue. I looked over the proposed design guidelines, like I said, back in November, I had a chance to look them over again. But one of the things that jumps out at me, that I cannot reconcile with the language as proposed, and if Mr. Gertson or Mr. Levine wants to help me reconcile it, that would be great. I was looking at page 21, talking about increasing your height up to 60 feet. That, that's an option if an environmental standard requirement, which is now a proposed requirement, is satisfied. However, there's also a line that says, at no point will a building be higher than 45 feet or four stories. So, my question is, which is that? Has that been reconciled yet? Is that something we should be looking at, because it does need to be reconciled, or some other option offered? I don't know, but that's what jumped out at me, because that's how Mr. Weinberg got his five-story hotel building.
Let's ask...
And I don't know that there are any people that were looking forward to a five-story hotel building when this was proposed two or three years ago.
Should we ask Noah, maybe just...
Yeah, please.
So, what Ms. Caliano was referring to on page 21 was the existing zoning, which provides an environmental bonus. So at the discretion of the, I believe it's the planning board, the, the planning board can award a density bonus up to 2-point FAR, and a height bonus up to 60 feet. That's the existing zoning. What we've proposed in our design guidelines was to eliminate that height bonus, height bonus, excuse me, and cap the maximum height at 40, is it 45 feet, I believe, 45 feet. So that is what we're proposing, is basically a height limit, and to reduce that bonus based on environmental standards, and make that a requirement for design. So that is, that is what is included in the plan.
So now you have to do it anyway, but you're not going to be able to build 60?
That's correct.
Max 45?
That's correct.
Got it.
Okay. Would you argue that height and an FAR is in the purview of the zoning board? Would you take that? Would you call that in the purview of the zoning board?
If an applicant seeking to exceed what the limits are, it would definitely be in the purview of the zoning board.
Right, but you're, but Mr. Levine just described it as being, and I guess it's proposed, so we'll go with the fact that this is a draft, that you said the planning board.
So it's not, it's not a variance, it's, it's built into the zoning code, whereas it, the zoning code allows for a bonus of 2.0 at the purview of the planning board, but it's not a variance from the zoning. I just wanted to make that clear. So the, the zoning, it is built in. They're not asking for an addition to what is being allowed. It's saying that if you do X, Y, and Z, these environmental standards, you can get an FAR bonus of .2 or .4, depending on your compliance within the, the guideline, your compliance to the zoning. So it is in the zoning, it's not a variance. Does that answer your question?
Oh, it sort of does, except that I don't know that the planning board has the authority to do that. I think you have to look into the zoning board to do that. And that's why I presented to you, Mr. Gertson, because you're the village attorney, and perhaps that needs to be reconciled, or cleaned up, or looked at, at a minimum, to be sure that we're on track with the right board doing what is within their authority under the statutes to do.
But I think if the statute puts that purview into the planning board's discretion, not discretion, but it gives them that authority to do that, then it would be in the purview of the planning board.
That's what I'm asking that we look at, because I see that as mixing the responsibilities and authority of the zoning board with the planning board, and having the planning board do what would normally be done by the zoning board, to avoid what would normally be a procedure for an application for variance, which, as it turns out, more times than not, are granted by our zoning board, which might be what you believe, and you would be correct to think that. I'm concerned about that, because we have a history of a zoning board that grants virtually every variance. And we could be looking at a 60-foot building without too much trouble, because I've never met a developer that doesn't want to push the envelope and get more, and negotiate bonuses, amenities, street furniture, just to get more density, more bulk, more height. And I know you have your percentages in, I saw you drop 70% to 60%. So I hope that, I hope that holds, because I see people pushing, I see developers pushing the envelope, I see homeowners pushing the envelope, and I see the zoning board holding very little to what we believe to now be suggesting some kinds of fixed standards. That's been the history. If the history is going to change for the future, great. So, the other point I wanted to make, sort of tracking Mr. Levine's last comments about trying to insert this all into the zoning code, is that right now, these are proposed as guidelines. As we all know, those of us who have worked in this area, or done some volunteer stuff in this area, guidelines are not enforceable. You can't bring anybody to court and say, you got to follow the guideline. That's called discretion. So discretion may be something we have to worry about here, and guidelines don't provide, I think this may have gone out, but, for enforceability. So if you're sure you're not going to exceed 45 feet or four stories, and you can lock that down legally, great, because that's going to give us a shorter hotel, the hotel that we didn't need to have at five stories. With all due respect to Mr. Levine sitting here, my concern last time was the cost of this draft, $12,000. Frankly, I think that's a lot of money. I have to ask any one of you, I don't know who contracted with Mr. Levine to do this, or his firm, but was there some effort at negotiating a lesser price? Can anyone respond to that?
There certainly was.
And what was that?
It was a verbal dialogue, and the fee would have been considerably more, but they granted us, we told them we had a budget not to exceed $12,000. What can we get for this budget? And this is what we've gotten. And I know that they've probably, they've actually given us extra time, obviously. You can see that they're giving us extra time, but it's within the budget of $12,000.
Well, that's good to know, that there was some effort at negotiation, because I often wonder, for the costs that we pay for so many items, whether they're negotiated or they're simply accepted, and whether those negotiations are strong. Because frankly, despite what you've said, I still think $12,000 for this document is a lot of money. And again, with all due respect to Mr. Levine, we got a document that tells us, it's probably hard to bury the utility lines. I think most people could have figured that out. We got a document that tells us, it's probably not a good idea to have bike lanes, or allow designated bicycle passage on Marble Dale Road. I think most of us would have realized that. So that's why I take issue, even with the negotiated $12,000. But I do appreciate the effort to negotiate. I think that should always be happening. Previous commenters here today have talked about their ideas. Many are good ideas. This is interesting that we're having a comment session now, because when I was trained as a planner, I was told, we should be having focus groups and open committee public meetings, community meetings. What we're doing now, and I'm thankful for it, is what would really, work really well in a nice community meeting, at the community center, perhaps even here on an off night, anywhere that's village property. This is the kind of back and forth we should have had before this proposal was drawn up, instead of after the fact. We should have involved the community sooner, rather than at the end, after the planning board. Which brings to mind another question. Mr. Levine mentioned that he had discussions with some persons from the, from the village in the, in the summer? Okay, were any of those persons from the planning board and the zoning board?
Yeah.
Can you tell us who they were? Okay. And were any other community members in those meetings?
I think it was just me, David.
So we only had one person from the community. I would again suggest that you have open community meetings, at least one more, to hear comments like Ms. Wood presented, and Mr. Dardano presented, because that's where a more free ebb and flow and exchange of ideas can happen, rather than in the formality of this room, within the constraints of the timeframes that you have to work with, with other topics on the agenda. I'm concerned that this might be susceptible to referendum to the village, within the village, and that it should be considered to be put out as a referendum, or whether just community meetings might suffice for an exchange of ideas. Because, again, the way I'm seeing the process here is, there's been a whole lot of preliminary work, limited community involvement all along the way, and now, hi, guys, here it is. Tell us what you like. You're the one that said, Mayor, there's plenty of talent in this village. There most certainly is. Half, at least a couple of these ideas I expressed to Mr. Luisey over the years that I've spoken with Mr. Luisey regarding planning. I didn't charge $12,000. Thank you, Mr. Levine, please don't take that personally. Nevertheless, there is a lot of talent in this village, and you can get a better result, if not the best result, when you use all your talent, instead of talking to people at the end of the road, when you might want to invite them along a lot sooner in the road, on the pathway. I've always been a proponent for having the community tell us what they want. That way they hear each other and challenge each other, rather than just this isolated group of us, and hopefully, somebody, other, some other people will come next month and offer comment. The other thing I wanted to mention was... You are. In September, you stood here and you said, you're a longtime resident, good to meet you, I don't really know you, but good to meet you, and you said, we've got a newly overcrowded Main Street. When did all this happen? I, of course, blanched like I'm blanching now. Because frankly, sir, this has been happening since 2008, with a rezone back in 2008. This has been happening since 2010 and '12, when the zoning board and the planning board approved the complex that the Quarry Place Apartments turned into on Main Street. This has been happening in 2014, in 2016, when the zoning board granted a height variance and the planning board approved the hotel site plan after months of public meetings and significant opposition. It's been happening all along. Why do I bring that up? Because people that are not here, that are not paying attention, and I thank everyone from the community that has come tonight because they're paying attention. That's what you want. You want involved community members, are going to say to one of you in two or three years, "When did this happen? Wasn't I told about it? When was I going to be told about it? I heard that, I told you this last time, a thousand times." I had somebody ask me in the hallway in February 20, I would say 15, say to me, "Are the members of the planning board paid?" Granted, it's a fair question. Point being, that person didn't know. That person happened to be somebody who grew up here. Do you have to educate everybody about everything? No. Should notice to the community be posted in a lot more obvious places on the premises here, perhaps? I know you do have it on the website. Although I have to say, tonight, when I went looking for the updated design guidelines, I had to search through a lot of pages. It was not readily available. I actually put in design guidelines in the search box. That's when it came up. I actually could not find it, and I have a really good idea what to look for. My point being, if you want community involvement, make it understandable. Blanket them with information about, "You better come and, and listen to this story. This was a good exposition, Mr. Levine. Thank you." You may need to do it again if my suggestions are heard. That's what we want to see. Because this is a million dollars a mile to bury utilities. I guess we're lucky Marble Dale Road is not a mile long. It'll probably be less than a million dollars, but maybe by then, it'll be a million dollars. Point is, involve the community. They are stakeholders, too. They vote for you, they don't vote for you, but they pay their taxes. And that's what they're entitled to, a back and forth. And I don't think a lot of them have it, and as I said last time, a lot of them don't pay attention either. And I, I'm more than willing to say that's their responsibility. But if you inundate them with, "This is when the meeting is. Please come," and you don't hide the guidelines on the website, you have a better chance of bringing more people into the fold. And it's their village, too. So, I wanted to mention about, I did mention about the utilities. The thing about the utilities that, that really is making me nervous, frankly, is I don't know how far you have to dig to bury utility lines. All up and down Marble Dale, we are going to have hazardous contamination. There's no escaping that. I don't know if you've considered it. I don't know if you have the expertise to address it. I don't know that it doesn't exist. I suspect strongly that it exists. I don't know whether you can include something in a statutory or a rule or a code that will address that. That is not going to go away. Every person that buys property is going to confront that. We are going to see the hotel scenario over and over again. Does that mean we shouldn't do it? No. But I think people better, better be very aware that that is what we're going to see again. And the hotel, frankly, was a test run. You had a very agitated, significant opposition. I don't know if you'll have an opposition again. I'm not promising it. I don't know what other people are going to do. Maybe people will just back away. Point is, there's going to be hazardous contamination that you're going to have to deal with. You're going to drag in DEC. You're going to drag in the county. They have to be dragged in. This is all part of that picture. This, thank you for your, I know we're talking design guidelines, but design guidelines are going to end up being the end with the bow at the end, but you're going to have to watch the present in the first place. And as far as buying property by the village, the first thing that went off in my head, Gary, eminent domain. I don't know if you can buy property. You can condemn property. I don't know if you want to condemn property, but that's part of this picture. It's a very big picture. It's a very complicated picture. It's not just how pretty it looks at the end, which of course is important because you want to have a corridor that looks like it belongs here. When I saw the Crestwood Design, the last one that we did, but for the height, which I still can't reconcile when I look at it, the first thing I saw was, and I said it, it looked organic. It looked like it belonged there. It was the right kind of design. You could, you could argue whether it was the right color, and that's the stuff you end up compromising on. But when I saw it, I said, "My God, that, that looks like it belongs here." I don't want to see matchy-matchy because a lot of these design guidelines are going to lead to matchy-matchy, and that's not going to look organic, and that's not going to look like it belongs here. But frankly, that's really at the end of the road. We're going to have to contend with purchasing property or who does purchase property, and that poor soul is going to have to contend with the quality of the dirt that they're looking at. And that's part of this picture. I'm not saying don't do it, but let's not just skate into this like it's, we're going to have fun because there's, there's going to be, there are going to be challenges. And like I said, the hotel was a good test run. So those are my comments for now. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else have any comments on this particular issue? So, yes, ma'am?
I have one question about that. It says that part of the hotel, whatever, contract was to, to put some effort into redoing that particular intersection, the, the one that, the Jackson and Marble Dale, right? So they already have like some obligation to attention to that area?
That was a condition the planning board put in there.
Is it the same, is it that same 70 Marble Dale across the street, or is it?
No, it doesn't include, the design that we have. The Marriott's project basically involves improving the sidewalks, improving the crosswalks. But it doesn't involve the opposite side.
Yeah, I, I don't remember. Do you remember whether or not? I, we don't know.
If it doesn't, it seems like...
Yeah, we don't know. I don't remember. Yeah, I thought, yeah.
They didn't do it last, or they obligated to do it?
I don't know. Yeah, not sure. Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay, I just, that seems promising somehow, like maybe they could be a good partner in that.
Thank you. All right, is there any of the board members want to chime in on this? We're going to keep this public hearing open until next month.
If I may?
Sure, please.
Once, um, once Marriott starts building and starts doing all the, the small walls and all of the greenery on the sidewalk, you're going to see all the other, um, all the other companies are going to just file suit, follow suit. They're going to be doing the same bricks. You're going to see a lot of, um, you know. I just think that once the hotel sets the precedent, it's all going to, everybody's going to fall in line. We're hoping that that's going to be the case.
All right, so, um, we're going to keep the public hearing open to next month's meeting. So if anybody has any written comments, please send them into the village clerk. And I, please, I make the suggestion for anyone who has, wants to make a public comment to come next month to this meeting, and you can speak while the public hearing is still open. So with that, do I have a motion to keep the public hearing open to February 11, 2019?
So moved.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
Favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And that's going to bring us to the adoption of minutes. The approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of December 10, way back in 2018. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Trustee Giordano. Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And that's going to bring us to the first opportunity to come to the microphone and address the board on anything that's on our agenda tonight. Yes, sir, with your hand up.
Albert Stern, 14 Westview Avenue. I'm responding to the resolutions on the agenda, which include two new tax refunds. These tax refunds for this year alone now are over $300,000 and are running at a significantly higher pace than last year or even the average over the last eight years. I would have liked to, I would like to address these tax refunds, the problem I see with them, and the meeting that Melba Cavalliano and I had a month ago in the mayor's office with Aldo Vitagliano, our tax attorney, and with our assessor, Todd Huttendon. Melba and I thank you for having both gentlemen attend the December 6, 2018 work session. We were a little surprised to see that the mayor called them into his office for a private discussion five minutes before you permitted us to enter the office for what we thought was a meeting fully open to the public. The meeting was supposed to be a discussion about the possibility of a property revaluation and a general discussion of tax certs for the village. It was not, however, a full discussion about a revaluation as you had promised, although there was some discussion about it. And unfortunately, due to your time constraints, the meeting ended while we still had many questions. I would like to suggest that you hold another open meeting before the February 21, 2019 tax certuary decline, deadline, so that the average Tuckahoe homeowner can attend and learn how they too may benefit from tax certuary processes and learn whether a village-wide revaluation would make the entire tax situation more fair all around. Here's some other things that we learned. The last time the village did a property revaluation was in 1941, 75 years ago. So properties are taxed here based on 75-year-old numbers. Bronxville and Scarsdale did their revaluations within the last 10 years. The question is, why is Tuckahoe using 75-year-old numbers? Secondly, common sense, which is, would suggest that the 1941 valuation numbers need some serious upbringing, updating to bring the values of village homes more in line with reality and make them more fair overall. Some of those millions in tax refunds could have been used to do a couple of revaluations and kept, keep overall tax certs to a lower amount while giving each home, homeowner a fair appraisal. Third, our task, our assessor also pointed out that a revaluation would not raise anyone's tax rates, contrary to what we have heard. The tax attorney told us that the village had caught up with the backlogs of tax certs, and we are now in good shape. I guess after paying $3 million in tax certs to mainly developers and corporations since 2011, we really should be in pretty good shape. Of course, that doesn't mean there will be no tax certs in the future, especially from larger developments that have recently been built in our village. I also learned that private attorneys typically charge 30% of the gross tax total for their work. So in addition to paying out over 2.7 million in tax refunds since 2011, taxpayers have been giving, given the attorneys a flat, a fat 30% of this or another $800,000 in fees. Taxpayers have not yet felt the full effects of the recent tax certs because this board has paid these charges by using primarily bond financing. Before 2011, village debt totaled just about 3 million, a little less than 3 million. Since 2011, the board has approved $4 million in bonds in order to cover village expenses, including tax certs. Our village debt now tops $7 million, which our taxpayers are on hook to pay in the future. It should be mentioned that our assessor commented that tax rates for Tuckahoe and Eastchester are on equal footing, so they can be compared year for year for 2018. It should be noted that tax, that Texco's, Tuckahoe's tax rate is $563,000, $563 per thousand assessed valuation, and Eastchester's is only $355 per thousand assessed valuation. This, Tuckahoe's tax rate is 60% higher than Eastchester's. And since 2011, the actual tax rate in Tuckahoe has gone up two times faster than Eastchester and Bronxville. For example, homeowner, homeowner in Eastchester who pays $20,000 in annual property taxes would, if the home were in Tuckahoe, pay about $3,000 more per year just to live here. We are simply not that efficient. Run in part because of econ, we lose in part because of economies of scale, but there are other problems I have not mentioned. My next concern was the interest in the large tax refund to Bill Weinberg. My interest was piqued by the latest tax cert of $125,000 approved by the board for him and his five-story hotel on Marble Dale Road. It seemed like a lot of money to be given to a developer for that matter, for that matter, any individual. I use my right as a citizen to use the Freedom of Information Act to see what I could learn. I am a numbers guy, and I was astounded by the numbers that I saw. From documents I received from my FOIL request, Weinberg bought the Marble Dale Road Hotel property in 2011. The assessor knew the property was not generating income and knew its history of significant contamination. Yet in 2011, he assessed it at 40, about $40,000. In the eight years since, the developer has been given a 75% reduction in his tax, in his property taxes by the decision of our tax attorney and the board which approved it. In the last year alone, his property taxes were reduced by 91% and now set at about $4,000, down from $40,000. When asked how he arrived at the $4,000 value, our tax attorney replied that the hotel property was not generating income. But as I said, the assessor knew that in 2011, that the hotel property wasn't generating income. So what changed to reduce the assessed value from 40,000 to 4,000? No credible answer was given for this question. All in all, the currently assessed value of $4,000 represents a 91% reduction, as I said. And every year was interesting because every year, the assessment was reduced even as the property became more valuable with a $5 million free cleanup from the Department of Environmental Conservation. Again, the taxpayer paid for the cleanup, and then the developer got another tax break. Even more disturbing, this developer can file for a similar tax cert in the future. Say the hotel's not making its occupancy goals. Our village will be in the position, a position of having to continue to pay high-dollar tax certs until we have the revaluation. A revaluation will equalize taxes assessed on similar properties throughout the village. It will make for a more fair property tax situation overall, and we will not have to pay attorneys outrageous fees for doing very little. In October, the mayor suggested that any homeowner should walk into this very courtroom and apply to get their tax refund. Of course, it will be rejected, and you will need to get an attorney to plead your case. But it's still a good idea, I think. So I suggested on the third Thursday in February next month, why not just come on down and claim some of the money your village has been giving out to its developers and corporate clients? It's only fair, and maybe we eventually may get that revaluation that we have not had since 1941. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on, anything on our agenda? Yes, sir.
In regards to the, what, Mike Dardano, 62 Justice, what Bert was just talking about. I don't know if you're familiar with this, but this is happening a lot in the Midwest. Big-box department stores are going to their local municipalities and asking for massive tax breaks because a Sears will go out in the next town over, and then they say, "Well, it only sold for a fraction," and it's called dark store theory. Okay? I'm, I'm thinking that based on Mr. Weinberg's agenda, which is, obviously, he wants to make money, that we may have what we call gray hotel theory here. And that it might not just be room rates, it also might be vacancies. In his own hotel, it might be vacancy rates elsewhere. Might depend on what hap, what happens with MG... might depend on what happens with MGM regarding if the casino does come in or doesn't come in. So I would say, I know that David had mentioned that he'll be assessed at the full value. I would argue that he's going to fight a tooth and nail so that whatever we can do to try to be on top of that prior would be wise. I just got a client that does this for a living, that's actually fights for people to lower their taxes. He does it for commercial and residential, so I'm going to be asking him questions to see if I can get some insight from him. He's the president of the association on that. But I think that it's important that we realize with clear, clear eyes, eyes wide open, Mr. Weinberg is going to fight it every time, I believe. And I want to make sure that we are on top of our game.
I think, I think it's not just Mr. Weinberg. I think it's really every commercial property owner is going to go ahead and file, they're going to hire the firm. Yeah, I mean, we know the firms, so, and they're going to go ahead and challenge every three years. It's, it's just the process. It's in every municipality and it's just what they do. So I, you know, he'll be assessed at full market value. He'll have to wait a couple of years. He'll, he'll go ahead and challenge what we're going to go ahead and what Todd assesses it at, at his business profile, too. Fortunately for us, we're going to get our end on the room tax, so that's really, that's a home run for the village. But look, this, this situation has not changed since 1941. It's really going to continue to ebb and flow like that. I think every commercial property owner, we've seen it, we saw Mr. Stern, you know, he mentioned about the hotel property, but he could have also mentioned about his own building where he lives, which we gave the same amount, 100 and something thousand bucks, or 90,000 bucks, you know? It's, it's, it's just reality, you know? And we brought in our assessor and, and our tax attorney to go ahead and give as clear an explanation as we could, so. And I can tell you that we did it here, oh my goodness, some years ago and the problem is it's just a complicated matter. It's a complicated subject. Not saying that the public shouldn't be, have the opportunity to listen to a dialogue between the tax assessor and the village's tax certuary attorney, but at the end of the day, it's not so sure that that's going to change. That's not going to frighten anyone, I think, from not filing tax certuary filing. I expect Weinberg and every other property owner up and down Main Street and the gentry, I expect them to do it again in a couple of years. The consulate has done it. Consulate was a huge amount of money. So it's, it's an unfortunate reality.
It might make sense, though, you mentioned having the tax attorney and the assessor. I know that in this article that I read about the, the stuff going on in the Midwest, that there was the secret sauce that the assessor talked about and how they came to evaluation. And in our society today, long diatribes and long articles don't tend to be read that much, but maybe a simple infographic, a simple explanation by them, just to give the village residents an idea of how it works, might make sense, regardless of if it doesn't change that much. I think understanding Melba's point is well-taken regarding understanding and open, many things are the way they are.
Right, right.
So I think that might be something that would make sense to put on the agenda where they both get up and make it very simple, keep it, keep it simple like a doctor would, not, not get too crazy. And I think that could help, just give us a better understanding.
I almost think it's probably better if we could find somebody who can articulate it better than some of, than, you know, it's a, look, I can say that we all sat in the room, we all left there and I've had this meeting, I've been here for 15 years and I've had this meeting 15 times over 15 years and I still walk out of the room saying, what the hell did I just, you know, what were they just talking about? I, I almost feel that we need to get somebody who can break it down into real, you know, layman's terms for all of us. And I'm, you know, I'm not faulting Todd or Aldo for, for that. It's, it's their, for them, it's first nature, but for us, who are seasoned people who've been dealing with this, it's still a complicated, you know, issue. Once you really get into all the elements of filing tax certuary claims, so it's, but I, I agree with you. You know, more knowledge is, yeah.
I'll ask my guy who I'm working with to see if maybe he has suggestions. He's the president of that association nationwide, so he can have a suggestion for that.
Thank you. Yes, sir, over here? Uh, no?
I just want to answer, you continue to talk about my co-op and the gentry that were taking $90,000. This is really unfair on your part. I don't have anything to do with the gentry and the board and giving, getting a $90,000 tax certuary and I don't want that. I'd rather have you to do the proper thing, to do the revaluation, which you've continually bypassed and talked about anything but doing it than to give any money to my co-op or anything, anyone else. We pay more in certuaries than any other community by far. So there's a real problem here. And as I've said before, you need to get a real vendor to talk about the pros and cons of this, which you failed to do during your term in office. So you can complain all you want about what's going on, but you need to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you for your answer and yes, sir.
Hi, Harmeet Guindi. I live in 135 Oakland Avenue. I had a question about the construction going on on Bronxville Parkway, the Allen Street exit.
Okay.
Supposed to be done, I think, 24th of December. Do you guys have an update on that?
Oh, boy. I can give you an update simply because I exercise on that path every morning. Nothing's happening there.
It's not our project, obviously.
I know they've brought in a, a new container there. What that container is there for, I have no idea. You know, I've seen workers there on a, they haven't been there since before Christmas, I can tell you that. And like I said, I'm out that way every morning at 8 o'clock.
It's a good question. We'll, we'll get an update. We'll, we'll, I'm sure we can reach out to somebody who can tell us. They've got to schedule a timeline. Let's see where it is and, you know, at least we'll know what their timeline is and as they start to exceed that timeline, and let's be real, they probably will, we'll be able to then say, hey, you know what? Back in January of 2019, you told us that you were going to be done in, I don't know, July 2019. How come we're here in August and it's not done? So very good question. Thank you.
I have one more question.
Sure.
I was listening to the budget earlier and, you know, it paints a nice picture. But I was concerned about the, the actuarial thing that has been brought to us by the state, right? That the discount rate has gone down and other adjustment that have made our long-term liability go up three-folds from nine to 27 million. Has there been a similar adjustment on the asset side? And if not, what happens to our double A rating?
It's actually, it won't change our rating at all because it's really just a, it's a number that's always been there. It's just now that they have, they're required to disclose it in a different fashion and that's what he, how he explained it to us. So the, the real matter hasn't changed. It's just, I don't know what, how they had, what formula they were using to display it as the lower number that us and all municipalities were using. It sounds to me almost like this year, they're instituting something where it's almost like exact real dollars accounting, that the state wants to have these higher numbers on their balance sheet. So for whatever reason, I don't know, it's, it's some grander accounting issue than down here on the local level. But it didn't change, it's not changing anything in terms of our, it's not increasing an amount of money that we owe, it's not reducing the time that we have to pay it. It's just, it's a disclosure item, really, is what it came down to. Okay, thank you. Anybody else on, okay. All right, we're going to move on to resolutions. We have very few tonight. The first is resolution number one, authorizing a tax certuary settlement with Julie Properties LLC for assessment years 2014 through 2018 with a street address of 291 Columbus Avenue and the amount of $9,668.34. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
Favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
Favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Ecklin.
In favor. Resolution number two is authorizing a tax certuary settlement with New Grange Realty LLC for assessment years 2013 through 2017 with a street address of 74 Main Street and the amount of $6,721.42. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano. Trustee Luizzi.
Favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Ecklin.
In favor. Resolution number three is approving vouchers in the amount of $452,740.40. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano. Trustee Luizzi.
Favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Ecklin.
In favor. Resolution number four is approving a memorandum of agreement with the Tuckahoe Police Benevolent Association for a contract term effective June 1, 2019 through May 31, 2022. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
So I'll explain a little bit. We've actually met with the Tuckahoe Police Benevolent Association, PBA, yes, and they have expressed interest and we also have the same interest in extending the current terms of their contract by a period of three years. So this is a huge benefit to the village in that we're basically freezing their contract, their salary increases and stretching it out for another three years. And that actually is, provides a pretty good benefit for the municipality from, certainly from a budgeting standpoint and most likely from a cost-saving standpoint in the future. So we were, we all, we discussed this at our work session and apparently they voted on it on Saturday, so we're happy to go ahead and get this extension.
Trustee Giordano.
Favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
Favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
In favor. And that's going to bring us to our departmental reports to the board and I do not see anybody from the police department here tonight, so Frank, you're up. Nothing, Frank's got nothing for us, all right.
No leaves, no snow.
No snow. He doesn't want to come up and talk about what the weatherman said, but now we've been very fortunate. We have plenty of salt, all right, Frank? Plenty of salt in that beautiful new salt shed, so.
I'm sorry, can I just, can I just ask Frank? Frank, could you just give an update on some of the work that you guys started on Columbus? There were a couple of residents that asked about it and I know you started some work on it.
Thank you and I hope Steve Celestino's watching tonight. Thank you. I knew there was going to be a question that's going to make me come up to the podium. But, no, we are, we've, over the years, many years ago, we planted our bivides up along the fence that borders MTA in Tuckahoe on Columbus Avenue in hope to disguise the tracks to some of the residents or the few homes that are in that particular area. But what has happened over the years, and I, I think they were planted about 20 years ago, is that for MT, they were planted so close to the fence that what MTA does to get rid of their overgrowth is spray everything instead of cutting it down. So they're using weed kill, plant kill, whatever necessary to kill whatsoever along the fence line. But unfortunately, it was our bivides that were up along the fence line over the years and they, they've killed them also. So it became unsightly and believe it or not, the only thing that was really lively looking over the years was the overgrowth of weeds. In, in trimming the weeds and the, and the vines and whatever, it just, it made it look somewhat better. But we were afraid to remove all this orb of id, dead orb of ides without first meeting with the residents there. So we did that. We did that about three, four months ago with an understanding that we would start by removing all the dead overgrowth first and, and take a closer look at the, at the corridor on Columbus Avenue. And, and so far, what we decided to do is clean the overgrowth. We're deciding to put a path there so those that park their cars at least have a safe haven to walk to the train station with yet enough room to plant a corridor of looking at red maples. So, you know, with that said, I think, given another year or two when the project's totally completed by, and also done in-house by TPW, I, I think that the canopy of trees driving down at Columbus Avenue corridor would be absolutely beautiful.
I agree there.
So that's where we are with that.
Thank you.
Any questions? You sure? Okay.
Thank you. Gary, anything? Okay, David?
Can you maybe just talk to us a little bit about the retaining wall up on, you know, the Jersey barriers that we installed? Yeah, I'm following, yeah. Just in case anyone at home is.
This is something that, there's been some barriers out there for several years now. We know that some residents have, have been looking at this unsightly, these unsightly barriers for a while now, so what we've done is DPW actually put like a better looking barrier up there. It has to do with kind of a safety issue and trying to keep people away from a collapsed wall in that area. So we put the barrier up there. It's on fulling. We've had to put some, you know, markings on there to make sure it's safe for pedestrians, but if anyone's in that area, we, you know, encourage them to slow down and not walk on that side of the road and we're looking to get that fixed and have that problem solved this year.
And you were very responsive to the residents up there. Thank you.
Thank you for Frank.
Yeah.
Okay, our next village board meeting is going to be on February 11th, 2019, and that is going to bring us to our Board of Trustees member reports. And as always, we start with my and your Deputy Mayor, Tom Giordano.
Thank you, Mayor Steve. I have very little to report this evening. The planning board meeting, as alluded to earlier, has been canceled for this month. The next meeting will be on February 5th is the work session at 7:00 PM and on the 20th of February, the actual meeting will be at 7:30 PM. And the zoning, next zoning board meeting will be on Wednesday, January 9th at 7:30 PM, following the work session that same evening at 6:45 PM.
Thank you very much. Trustee Luizzi.
Thank you, Mayor. I as well, we'll keep this short. Tuckahoe seniors are back at Father Fata Hall as of January 3rd and their programs are up and running. The, they have this new program that is being run by Julie Larkin. It's a washi tape craft class. So this is a new activity that the seniors here in Tuckahoe will be able to participate in. And again, for any children of elderly parents or grandparents, this is a good time to sign them up for the senior center here in Tuckahoe. It's $20 for the year. They meet twice a month at Father Fata Hall on Tuesdays and Thursdays. It's really a wonderful, wonderful program for seniors. And of course, the, the history committee there also back here after the Christmas break. And as always, they continue to collect and document artifacts here in the village every Wednesday, Village Hall from 9:00 AM until 12:00. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Trustee Andino.
I will also try to keep it short. As usual, I'm always in awe at the robust programming we have at the library. I'm just going to give a few highlights and as I do every month, just recommend that you go on the website for the library and see what might be available that you might want to take part in. For the children in the month of January, they actually have special Japanese bilingual storytime with Ms. Elaine and Ms. Miyoko for ages zero to five years old, Friday, January 25th at 11:00. There's also special Mandarin bilingual storytime with Ms. Elaine and Ms. Ginger, ages zero to five, Tuesday, January 29th at 11:00 AM. So if you want to go and listen to some Japanese and Mandarin storytime, that should be fun for the kids. The teens also have chests for K through 12, monthly teen programs, and they also have creating flower fairy dolls on Monday, January 14th. There's also, they're also working on writing your best college essay for anyone who has kids college bound on Monday, January 28th. So I just encourage you to get the kids out to the library. Also, the adults have Reiki meditation workshop, chair yoga. There is an adult book club. They're reading Behold the Dreamers and New Year, New You, Eating for a Healthier You. They're going to have a vegan cooking on Monday, January 28th. So get out to the library if you, you do have to register for these programs. You can go to tuckahoe.com backslash library to get more information.
Yeah, so I don't really have much. I just don't want to make a correction. We believe that the calendar had a MLK breakfast for the 14th. We just want to be perfectly clear, it's going to be the 21st. The ECAP's MLK breakfast is the 21st. It's our 34th annual breakfast. It'll be at the Reform Church in Bronxville. It's their major fundraiser. It's a wonderful time every year for kids. They all, you know, perform for us. It's usually only about a couple of hours, starts sharply at 9:00 AM and we'd really love to see a lot of the residents out there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yep, they will be prompt, too, at 9:00, for sure, so. So I want to use my time tonight just to let our residents know that after a lot of thought, I have decided that I will not be running for reelection as mayor in the upcoming March election. I've had the pleasure to work with such a wonderful group of staff and elected colleagues over the last 15 years, but since I'm still holding down the office
over the last fifteen years, uh, but since I'm still holding down the office at the end of the hall here until April first, I'm gonna save my final thoughts and words for my last village board meeting, which is gonna be on March eleventh, so I'll just leave it at that. So with that, it's gonna give us our second opportunity to address the board on anything at all. I think he gets it, he's older than you, Anthony.
Well, I gotta go because I'm not supposed to be driving at night.
Uh-oh.
Uh, I, I belated Christmas and a happy, uh, healthy New Year to all. Um, I was happy to see that the bridge was, that the bridge was, was finally taken away from the railroad yard, and also I'd like to know, uh, what did it cost the village to have that taken down, and did we get anything from it for the scrap?
Well, we ended up, um, uh, entering into an agreement with MTA for them to do it, so we didn't have to do it. So it just actually cost us, but actually, it's a good question, because I, I don't know if we got the final accounting.
We entered in an agreement with MTA for a cap at two hundred thousand dollars. There's actually a small piece of the bridge still there that MTA still needs to take away, or, MTA needs to coordinate with us to take away. We're waiting for MTA to have a piece of equipment, um, back on track. Once that's taken away, uh, we will get the final bill from them, and yes, we did, uh, we haven't received the funds for the scrap metal yet, but, um, we are due that money. I don't know how much that will be.
Right.
Okay, to Mr. DiMarco and his crew, a great job in decorating the trees in the parks, and also for the, uh, lamp posts and all the, and the bridge at Christmas. I'm gonna feel sad seeing that taken down because they really were beautiful.
Looks like a Christmas card, doesn't it?
Yep, it really was. And, uh, as I said, it was, it'll be a sad day for me to s, to see them come down. And then, as he mentioned, uh, as I was gonna mention, they did a great job in, in his crew in removing the, uh, the debris and the bushes from that fence along the, the ra, uh, railroad, 'cause I understand it was, uh, more or less a little hazardous for the people that parked there, and I'm glad to see here that, uh, he will continue the, the walk over to the end of the fence so that they can be able to, uh, walk safely to the train station. Again, I'd like to thank the traffic department of the police department for moving the stop line and putting up a stop here on red sign by the edge of the, the building, by the intersection of Main Street and, uh, Lake Avenue. They say the squeaky wheel does get the grease sometimes. They would like to see the two parking spaces removed from the bridge, though, to alleviate of making a hard right turn, especially for buses and, and trucks. And if possible, a speed bump on Lake Avenue somewhere between Bronx and Main Street, 'cause it seems cars speed up a lot to make the light, and also there's a lot of children there waiting for the bus sometimes to go to school. There's, there was a sign on the Parkway Oval dictating that you're not supposed to walk your dog, or play ball without a permit, or play golf or archery. Unfortunately, that sign is not longer there. I'd like to see that taken, put back. I think it's by the, uh, the water, I mean, the shed.
I see David penning that down right now.
And it's bad enough with the grease droppings on the sidewalks on, uh, by Parkway Oval, but I've noticed quite lately, there's also dog droppings on the sidewalk and the grass. I li, I like to see those things enforced and, if possible, taken care of. I know the police department has a lot more important things to do, and also the DPW, so I'd like to see those things taken care of, and also, I'm happy to hear that the height of that hotel will not go over what it was supposed to be, and I'm only, and I'm surprised that it's, it was taken up now. What about in the beginning when the plans were filed? Wasn't that taken into consideration? Well, on a final note, I'd like to wish you all, again, a merry, a very happy and healthy New Year, and thank you for your time.
And the best to you, Jerry, and I wanna tell you, thank you for bringing up-
And the best of you and your retirement.
Thank you, and for bringing up a good memory, 'cause I always think of my grandmother, always used to say, "The squeaky wheel gets the earl." Thank you, I haven't thought about that in a while, so, thank you. Yes, sir?
Anthony, if you are a three-bedroom place. On the revaluation, is that only for village tax? That's not for county or fire or school tax? Is that just for village?
Correct, that would be for the village, uh-
This village owner?
Tax roll, that's right.
Okay. And you would have to get a price from a company to deal with, then you guys gotta vote on it?
Correct.
All the little legal stuff, right? Okay, that, that, that took care of that.
Sure.
Main Street, any word from the county or anything on Main Street?
On the pothole repairs for Main Street?
Anything, the whole road.
Um, yeah, the, uh-
That would start in the Dodge.
Yeah.
All right.
Um, you know what?
It's not even come yet.
Actually, uh, I've mentioned it to our new county legislator, and, uh, I strongly urge you to also send him a note, 'cause the squeaky wheel gets the earl.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Okay, other than that, uh, I had some questions on the, I'll probably, I'll state that for next month, just wanted to hear everything tonight.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yeah, good luck on your retirement.
Thank you.
Yeah, good night, guys.
Thanks.
Just a quick comment. I suspect that one or two of you might be members of the ECAP board. I'm referring to the MLK breakfast. I've been there several years. I mentioned this last year. It seems to have Boy Scout attendance, very nice. I would like to see Girl Scout attendance. I cannot compel, I'm not a Girl Scout, however, I suggest, if you wanna be a nudge, whoever's on that board, encourage them, suggest to them to extend an invitation to any local Girl Scout troops. This is the beginning of the year of the woman. This is the year that Congress put forth legislation to give women the vote. It will be ratified a hundred years next year. Let's have our Girl Scouts. If they don't wanna come, then they don't wanna come, but let's invite them. Thank you.
Thank you. Did, did you wanna come up? Okay, sure.
Uh, just a couple of things. I wanted to thank John Stoffel. John Stoffel, uh, was, I was at the, the Chamber event, and, uh, Mayor, you were there, and I brought up what, uh, charity work I've been doing with Homes for Veterans, and he made a very generous donation. So generous, in fact, that, um, I'm hoping that that donation will allow us to do something locally, and I'm in discussion with Home for Vets, they're based out of Harrington Park, New Jersey, and I believe I've mentioned it before, they go in and fix, uh, homes and make them accessible for people that have disabilities from, um, either, they were in the military, or they had an issue in the military, or even if, if they had an accident after. And, uh, I, I'm just shocked, his kindness and generosity was really wonderful. He came up to me, and he, and I gave him the information, and he did it, so I, I just wanna publicly thank him.
Wow, I didn't know that.
Very impressed, yes, yes.
Thank you for coming here and telling-
It's a big deal. Um, other, I have like just some quick requests. I'd like to make some suggestions for, uh, future meetings. One is, I think it makes sense to maybe have the building inspector do sort of like what we talked about for the tax thing, where he kinda gives an overview, not here necessarily, but in another forum, just to give an overview of the, of what's going on regarding, uh, residential and commercial inspections, not to beat the system, just to give people some more awareness to make it easier for them.
He could come to this meeting, actually.
That's fine.
He used to come to this meeting, um, you know, on a regular basis, so, that's, that's reasonable.
That would be good. Um, also, an, an update on the P sites, uh, I don't know if you know this, David, you may know this, but, um, uh, Dr. Hughes spoke to Kevin Carpenter, and they're getting close. They're getting close, they're, they're, yeah, yeah. No, no, but he, no, but this was different verbiage than before, so I'm gonna play, I'm gonna talk to, and see what I can find, but, yeah, so hopefully, my suggestion, if there's still no movement in a month, that we then go to our elected officials that are above us, Andrew Stewart Cousins and whatnot, and see if they can move them. Uh, also, the, I, I like the idea of this economic development committee, so I'd like to bring that up, and I'll write a note to you guys, and, you know, with maybe some outlines for that. Uh, the other thing is, is that, uh, I thought it would be good for the Chamber to give